I feel like a little kid waiting for the holidays, but this is a moment we've been waiting for for quite some time. And tonight, we will get an opportunity to see the draft final report and exterior study prepared by TSKP. And with really nothing else other than I'm going to go right into new business, and I will turn it over to our friends at TSKP. And also before doing that, I also want to thank folks who are joining us from the public. Thank you for coming out tonight. And there's been a lot of talk and discussion about our work, and we're very excited about this evening. So welcome, and I'll turn it over to Richard and Tai Su.
Great, thanks very much, Greg. We're happy to be here. First of all, I want to thank the committee for scheduling this special meeting. It certainly gave us a little bit more time to seriously ponder what it is that we're going to be presenting tonight. Today's a milestone in our project timetable. That's the day that we share the studies that we've done on the two sites that were selected by this committee, the first being the Prosser New Construction Project, and then the second being the McMahon Expansion and Renovation Project. I've watched Tai Su work on this project for quite some time. Actually, I've worked, watched him work most of my life, but on this particular project, I saw that he has worked very hard on it. This is not something that he takes lightly. What a building looks like, the spirit that it conveys is something that he absolutely wants to make sure he gets right. And I think he has captured the essence of what the future of Bloomfield Library should be, at least those two components of the library that are in the bricks and mortar form. We're not going to address the virtual library because that's not something that we do. But just to give you a little bit of a background, remember that the existing Prosser Building was designed in 1963. By the time this new Prosser Building is built, it will be 60 years later. And people in 1963 could not have imagined what the world would be like in 60 years later. And the same thing is true going forward. The only thing I think that we can say is we better make sure that the building we do is flexible. We can't predict everything. We do know that times are changing, and they will continue to change. I mean, just look at the history of Bloomfield. It has evolved quite significantly. This area was settled in 1660. And originally, it wasn't Bloomfield, it was the land of the Pecanics. So nothing is constant, things do change. Now, the project is at a point where we have prepared the budgets, we've test-proofed the sites, we've prepared plans that meet your programmatic goals, your square footage goals, we've done all that. And then tonight, we will reveal to you what Tai Su's image is for these buildings. But that doesn't bring us to the end. The project still is not real until the voters vote to approve borrowing the funds to build these projects in the future. You all know that. And then after those funds are approved, the project will continue. It will continue going through a very rigorous review and approval process by the many commissions and boards that exist in this town. So there will be plenty of opportunity to refine the design to make sure that it meets all of the practical needs. So that's a big preface, but I wanted to give you that perspective before Tai Su shares his images. So if I could share my screen?
Go ahead.
Richard, you will be talk or video some more too.
Okay, so this is the presentation. Tai Su, if you could take it away.
Okay. Well, I spent a long time, and I remember Michelle, you said, well, can you give us some quick sketches what might look like? Well, actually, architecture, at least for us, for me, doesn't work that way. Really need careful study of many angles. We usually make a model study of site and so on, so on. So we spent a lot of time, but I will assure you that this is first attempt what the building might look like, and I'm sure you have a lot of comments and suggestions and so on. And we're going to take all those things. And really, once we're going into serious design process, there is, I would say, schematic design and design development, and that time, we're going to show you models, renderings and details what the building inside look like, and that sort of evolving, developing process. So I welcome very much your comments today, but I would say, really, next serious study step will be our referendum. So let me start with that note. Let's next, next slide. Okay, you saw this before, right? And we drew this, this really is, is show, this diagram really is a key to find the design direction for us. You see, this shows how Prosser is located in such a key anchor position of your downtown, and really, passageway dictates certain orientation of the building. You see, from town green and town hall side, you come in that corner, that's the sort of arriving point, that's the really interest to the library. And then the other side, from the parking, we have a bridge, I think a bridge would be just wonderful, special features for the library, and then there's a porch, covered porch all along. So that's something very, very special, porch. I saw, this is a public passageway, I don't see any other library has anything like this. So it is become a quite public, yet very special kind of thing. When you look at the simple configuration of the building, porch up front and the building behind, so that's very classic architectural typology type of the building. So here are the example of what I'm talking about, next. You see that? It's very classic Beranda balcony building, column up front and the building behind. And you see the other building. And then low here is much better picture of what might look like in your special balcony area. We have shown about 14 feet wide of cupboard balcony. So you see, just like this, we can put up furnitures out there, people might sit down, have lunch and read, and it will be very festive and a very exciting space to bring the public into downtown and especially to library. So this is sort of driving force of the design. Next. So let me visit floor plan one more time. You see from green side, there's a plaza, a sort of, you know, they can, this is a public, public place. I don't see your, this is a green area or town road, there is such places, public place about doing public things such as, you know, political rallies or any festival activities and so on. See that? Then from there, there is a main interest right there, right? Right? That is the main, well, it's, I would more so library before that, Richard, yeah, that gateway, yeah, that. And the side parking lot and the bridge over and coming in. So that sort of covered bridge is become a very public, natural gathering place, interest. There are two doors to the building, one at the right is a library, a big library interest. And so you go in, and there's a two stories high, this wonderful open space. And to the east side is all glass, we really want to see from reading room and so on, or look at the park. But not only that, from inside, but from outside, we want to see people driving along the Tangs Avenue, see inside library activities and so on. And there's another interest to the community room, so it's very naturally kind of divided main library interest and community room. And between that two, we have affairs. So I think it's a very nice organization, and behind it, we have up the way children's block, children's area, teens area. But Richard said, you know, it is very open space. It's just, if you remove that teens space, it's all big open space downstairs.
Flexible is the word I use.
Okay, flexible. And I did show you a quick drop, stop over place along Tangs Avenue, and maybe delivery truck can be stopped there. So there is room to create that sort of oval place. And also, I showed down Lower River, some dumpster, was free in dumpster area. You see, there's a driveway going under the building to the Lower River. Yeah, okay. So if you look at this, again, I say, this is very classic building type, porch in front and main building behind. But we really like to interpret this classic building in a modern way. After all, we are building library for 21st century. What does that means? We really want to make place very open, inviting, and seeing from outside, inside, and also maybe inside the flexible space. That's, that's what I guess I meant 21st century, much more of a friendly and open kind of library. Okay, upstairs, again, it's all along this large space would be a, the second floor is book stacks and all, adult reading, reading area and small study area all front. So from downstairs, you really go see the whole thing. I talked about, we really like to make this building inside or wood structure would be just very warm and nice, and I think that really convey the feeling of a friendly, green architecture kind of concept. And to the left side, together on the step area. The Lower River has basically 24 car under that building, and we have just access facility to go upstairs to the main interest area. So it's a very simple program. So this is the existing photograph, we took this, I took this photograph, and what you see, the church is really a most prominent and strong element on this corner. And existing Prosser Library, it really is not standing up to the churches. It's kind of low and scale wise, it's kind of too small to be a strong public building. So we really wanted to make that, that corner very prominent and strong so that really, with church, make it very strong presence statement as a town center. So next. So this is my, this is the rendering. See, I did with this color pencils and a little bit of a hysteria, so it's not that very sleek and good looking rendering, but I think it conveys a very good idea. Now, this is taken same angle from this town hall corner, looking toward a church and the building. And you see the main interest going in, there's a plaza, sort of colored, little bit brick colors and going in, main interest, and then there are covered porch all along there, and then continue there, there is a bridge connecting to the parking area. Now, facing to the east side is that two stories high space, and up to about seven feet, we left as a glass so that people inside be able to look out without any interruption. Above that, we introduce burka fins. See, east side is best controlled, early sun with a burka fin, so it's a burka fins all along the two stories high space. And further to the right side, the two stories high, you know, floor plan, you see two stories high space, so it's, it's broken in the two stories high.
Let me clarify, I made for the committee. So you do have glass without vertical sun shades at the lower level. This glass, though, continues up. It's not just vertical fins, it's also glass that has on the face of it, vertical lubers to cast shade onto the glass. Because the eastern exposure, to control that light, you do need to shade it.
So from inside, this fin, we envision about two feet on center, so really looking out to the green, that fin is not going to interrupt visually too much, even though it will shield early sun very nicely. So I think this is a nice, simple eastern elevation. Now, see, I really was, two things I had in mind, is one, it really had made a strong statement and big enough so that it has a strong presence on this corner, yet it tried to be harmony with the church. So you see, church has bural columns, so there's burality is the rhythm of this building too, the columns, vertical fins and so on. And also, color wise, I thought church is strong presence, and I think this library is good with the white color, and together, it makes a harmonious presence to that. Lot of New England town, you know, has a white church, white town hall, and sort of same colors making a very strong statement. So I just restate that this is very classic modern in nature harmony with the church, yet it is very modern for 21st century library. That's our goal. And again, you know, we're going to further refine and change certain things. I don't like certain things here, it will be improved, and I think when we build this three dimensionary, it will become much more ritual kind of form. So next. Well, I said transparent, right? So I think it's at evening dusk, when a lot of car driving by this Tangs Avenue, it's just going to be wonderful, lit up, and people read inside, and you see this library, it's a best advertisement for library on the green of Bloomfield. And it's, I think it made the statement very strong on town center. So that is, I think, the end of Prosser Library. Shall I continue, MacPan?
Yeah, we can always come back to this. But I have to tell you, I mean, this is a unique building. This is, this is a building that is going to be identified with Bloomfield by the town center.
Now, this is computer, computer drawing, so it's much stronger and better than my hand drawn sketch.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on. Okay, McMahon. See, I took this picture, and it's a public library, yet, you know, it really not very inviting, it's just does not have presence on Blue Hill Avenue. It's blank brick wall, small interest, and then really narrow the window to the right side, and really has a, I have a strong feeling, when you, telling to town people, we're going to add or something, here is opportunity to make a really complete transformation of the building to really transparent, visible, and also make a statement, this is public building. So that's, that was our goal. Next. So here's the site plan. You see, unfortunately, this, because the nature of the location, we end up two entrances. Blue Hills Avenue interest moves to pedestrian walk, and then parking from the backside. So, so we located that control table right in, and because of that, from one point, both interests will be controlled. And let's go next floor, larger floor plan. See, here shaded gray, can you read that shaded gray? That is the existing portion of the building. We placed children's area and the teens in existing building, so, and also staff, created new staff offices. And then up front, new area will be house, will house adult area. And adult area, we have two areas, upper part has a community room and a small conference room, and then cafe and adult area divided into open and then quiet area living room. But I thought maybe this whole new addition may be very high ceiling, especially toward Blue Hill side, all glass, so that people really see inside what's going on and inviting coming in, you know, this is public building. So let's see, next, please. So here is, looking from the south side, the roof kind of folded, prayerful roof lifted up, and you can't bring the natural light from all four side, higher, clear story, but Blue Hills three sides all open. And so you really be able to see what's going on inside, and I think it really going to bring attention to people and more coming place, coming easy, and people can notice this is a very special building. It's not just one room to shop or store.
So this roof has the illusion of floating up high because you have glass all around on all sides. So the existing building height is here, and this new roof is, is higher, really to open up.
Right, about 16 feet high, so it will have a really, real wow effect when you step into this room. Next. This is from the other side, and you see, right side, that's where a community room is, and also conference room and copy machine, service area, that's sort of, I think, I mean, we have a choice whether continue same brick or this rendering shows a wood siding, and I thought it's much more friendly or very nice wood siding rather than bring that dark brick.
This actually could even be reclaimed, wouldn't it?
Sure, yeah. So, so, so I think it keeps a very warmth of a, of a public library and so on. I think this is the last slide.
Yeah, the next one is about a schedule that I just want to talk, touch upon briefly, then we can go back to any of the images that you just saw. So today, we are presenting the exterior study. We also have a draft of the final study to leave with you. That draft is about an 18 page report that highlights the same points that Tai Su just talked about, but it's a document that you can review and you can use to submit to the town council. We know you have a town council meeting scheduled on the 24th of May, and then things happen pretty quickly after that. We are hoping to get town council approval on June the 15th, authorizing the library to submit a letter of intent to the state library board, and then to submit a grant application subsequently. That grant, grant application deadline is September 1, so the application has to go in before then. And then there are periods of marketing, if you will, or public outreach prior to what potentially could be a quiet period. Not sure exactly what that quiet period, when that quiet period starts, that will be, that depends upon your town regs, and maybe Nancy, you can get some opinion on that. But there will be a point where you can no longer spend public funds in promoting the project. That's what I mean by the quiet period. And then the town referendum, I believe, probably will happen around November the 2nd. So that's what we have ahead of us. And then after the town referendum, the design process will continue. So that's where we are. Shall we go back to any particular images? Mr. Chairman?
Why don't we go back to the computer drawing of the Prosser Library? Why don't we start there? Okay. All right. All right, so why don't we open the floor to questions, comments about the, the rendering? I don't, hands, okay, I see a bunch of hands. I will start, I will just say, Richard and Tai Su, I really like the way that you all melded the, the color scheme, the white, into the church across the street. I think that's a really, really nice schematic, and it flows really nicely. And I like the usage of the brick on the Mountain Avenue side, which sort of upholds some of the, what we might say, the classic of the current building. And, you know, I think, Richard, you may have mentioned it, but I see this as sort of a classic but a modern 21st century building, something that will, you know, get us into the next couple of decades without losing sort of what people might deem to be the historic look of town. But those are my quick thoughts, and I'm going to open it up. I see Budunzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ken and Richard, for your presentation. I appreciate the time that you put into this. I appreciate the time that you put into this rendering. But I still have grave concerns. I think that this is a beautiful building. It's absolutely gorgeous based on how you've presented and you've rendered it. I just don't think that it is historically compatible to our center of town. I would have much preferred to see a building that would have more New England charm with a combination of modernism, so some more colonial. I get the impression that you have considered incorporating that when you presented the slide of the colonial verandas. But I don't see that here. So I don't, I don't, I can't visually picture that in the presentation in which you've given. I would have much more preferred something that had been more in line with the first congregational church there on the corner, not just limited to the color scheme. I would have preferred to see more brick to where it, although a new building would much look much more compatible with our existing town hall. I think that this would look great in a developing city or an area in a existing city. I just think it's too harsh and too much of an industrial look for our center of town. And so with that being said, I was happy to hear that your development of this design is an evolution to where you will be making modifications and changes. I hope that you take what the feedback that you're getting from this committee, because a lot of the feedback that I give to you and that I bring to this committee is not limited on my own personal opinion. There are people in the community that contact me with regards to what is actually happening with this library building committee and what they actually want to see. And so I'm tasked with conveying that information on behalf of those people because not, people don't always have time to show up to these meetings. And, you know, they look to us on the committee to be the spokesperson for them. And that I'm willing to do. And so with that being said, I really like you to reconsider your design to make it look more compatible to a New England village look. This puts me in mind of our first main downtown public library, which is a beautiful building. But I think that what would fit more here is something more in line of what Windsor has done with their main library and their center of town. If you can incorporate more of that. And I know that you're capable of doing it because I've looked at your portfolio. I looked at your portfolio that you have on your website for all of the different projects that you have been charged with. So I have no doubt of your capability and your ingenuity and creativity. I'd just like to see more of that from a more historical and more New England village center. I like to see more of that reflected in this main Prusa Library at the center of town. What you have done at the McMahon, I think that design is a nice design. I would have loved to have seen that same type of renovation applied to the existing Prusa Library that we have. But I like what you've done to McMahon. But I'd like to see more of a New England village style and architectural design for the Prusa Library. Thank you for your time.
Bob Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm impressed with what I've seen for both. When I'm looking at the Prusa, when I, especially the dusk view that we have in front of us, I think that points out very clearly how the louvers or shades, whatever you want to call them, on the glass on the side facing Tuncus Avenue works. And how the building, inside the building is lit up later in the day. Like I said, here the brick, I think that's a good segue to it. When I look at this, I think in terms of the fact that it's different. It is not so much New England style as it is, to some extent, I'm gonna call it conservative. Because it's a block type building. And yet it radiates something different than just that. The two things, comments I have to make otherwise is, number one, I hope the roof is relatively flat one so they can support solar panels up there. Because I think that's an ideal place to put them on this building. One thing I do want to point out is that the outside entrances to the building need to be sliding doors. Not push doors, sliding doors. And you may want to think about, which I did not see, having a double set of doors for entry into the building. As that will help control the heat from outside and the cold from outside at different times of the year. But the overall design of this building interests me. I I do, I understand where Vudunzi is coming from. And I share some of the same sentiments. But at the same time too, I'm trying to look ahead as well. And I think that trying to go with the New England style really creates issues when you talk about flexibility and letting the outside light come in and presenting a very inviting building. I think New England's, the traditional New England style is more for voting than it is enticing. And I think this is a very enticing building to entice people to enter into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ava?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a breathtakingly lovely building. I love the fact that the truly historic building on the green, which is the first congregational church, is clearly echoed on the side that faces it. The side that faces town hall presents a segue from the older parts of Bloomfield to this century and the century possibly beyond. The flexible space is exactly what we hoped for. It allows us the freedom to use this somewhat smaller space to basically fulfill every need and want for everyone in town. You know, it allows the staff to do everything they've been trying to do under difficult circumstances. I actually lived in Saratoga Springs for quite a long time. And this reminds me on the town hall side of the Grand Union Hotel, that beautiful classic veranda that I remember from that city. The echo of that classical period of design is so clear. And I just think that this is going to let everyone look into the building. It will let everyone see that it's a library for a change. It will draw people in. It will be the statement that people have wanted in the center. And it lets us look from the past into the future. And thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
You know what, there's one other thing that I really kind of need to mention here. Several of us are members of the Board of Trustees. And I emphasize that word trustee. We do represent the town. We also hear from loads of people. And I have as well incorporated what I have heard on phone calls, in emails, etc. From people who would like to look forward. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to say that the number one thing that speaks to me in both of the buildings is how inviting they are. And that was We lost you, Elizabeth.
Why don't we go to Mark and come back to Elizabeth when she's?
Okay, I'll be glad to yield to Elizabeth when she unfreezes. I've got a big smile on my face. I think this is really exciting. We're gonna be spending hopefully many, many millions of dollars. And I think something new and bold with all the attributes that people are saying is fantastic. It's very easy to say, oh, it should match town hall. Oh, it should be colonial. But that, you know, that's just talk. I mean, for a building to meet all the things we want it to do performance wise, feelings wise, I think this accomplishes all those things. And honestly, I think good design comes in all sizes and shapes. And to just, to draw a parallel, look at the diversity in Bloomfield. Look at the diversity in our committee. I mean, you know, different can be wonderful. And I think this will be a destination for people to come and be excited about. It really expresses what's happening inside and outside. There's plenty more design to do. And I thank Tyseu and Richard for for really heading in this direction the whole time. You know, this is not just plastering an exterior on a floor plan. I think, I think they've had this in mind the whole time. They've really integrated all the different pieces and parts of it. And like I said, I'm really thrilled about it. I'm very excited. I like new. Yay. Thank you.
Angela?
Okay, sorry. Good evening, everyone. I listened to Vudunzi and I appreciate her concern because I also kind of thought of it that way in terms of, does it really fit in with everything else around it? But I also think of the younger people. And we, if this library is going to be here for the next sixty years, we also have to think about the fact that we want, we want to bring in other crowds and not just someone or people who love the New England charm and the quaintness of something. That could be a turn off for, you know, the younger people who they see, this, I think, represents more of what is coming. And not just what we are right now or what we want to be right now. I think this new building is, it looks like a breath of fresh air. And I think it will attract a new crowd. People who would not normally go into a library or who might look at what we see as quaint and charming might just be old for some people and they don't want to be there. You know, it's not attracting them. We might be attracted to that. But we, you know, I'm a teacher and so I watch students, what they gravitate toward. And if you, there is a group that would gravitate to the old style building, the charm and the quaintness. But you also have some students who just will not be seen in a building like that. So I think this building is promising in that I think it will attract more of a modern, I don't know if you want to say a modern, but a different group who will be fascinated or enticed by the newness and the promise of what this building holds.
Thank you. Jesse?
Sure, thank you so much. As I heard, first of all, I just want to say thank Richard and Tyseu Ken for both renderings. As I heard Richard's explanation in the beginning, I heard the date sixteen sixty. And as I ride around, you know, Bloomfield and Southfield and Windsor and different areas, often you'll see the plaques on the side of buildings and, you know, the dates that they were created. And I think about like what was going on in the United States at that time. And so if we think about, you know, when Bloomfield was settled in sixteen sixty and then, you know, the history about, you know, Bloomfield being incorporated in eighteen thirty five, I believe it was, we got to think about what was happening at that time. And also what was happening for people who look like me at that time. And so what I say, what I hear Bloomfield saying or see Bloomfield doing is moving into sort of like a new era. And I think that we do have to keep some of the historic aspects of the center of town because of the fact that if you don't remember your history, you're doomed to repeat it. At the same time, I also see, you know, that there is change, that there is, you know, evolution. And so this to me is a perfect mixture between, you know, history and the future. Just saying that Bloomfield is really making an effort to do that. The McMahon Library, that rendering was really breathtaking because it was a total transformation and bringing it to another level. And again, there goes the symbolism of what we're doing with this system. The library system is moving to a new level. And so, or a new dimension even, because it does look futuristic. So, you know, those are just what I see. And I think that as we walk through Bloomfield, we'll be able to see that and remember that while also, you know, keeping some of the history as well.
Thank you. Lois?
I'm befuddled. I think it is a beautiful, beautiful building. And to my mind, it's out of scale. Although I know we are fighting for every extra square foot we can get. I share many of the comments that Vudunzi made. And I don't think she was saying it had to be an old New England building. I think she was, and she can speak for herself. But I, what I heard her say was whether there were some elements that could make it a little closer to of the sense of the town center now. I understand that you're trying that with the columns and with the upright fins on the front. For me, that, I'm just not an architect, so I don't see that. So I'm concerned about the scale. I think it's beautiful, but I have the same concerns Vudunzi has about whether it really relates to the rest of the center. With respect to the McMahon Building, I also think it looks wonderful. The only concern that I have is that it looks like the portion of that building for the adults is not very large. Maybe the plan is that it will be mostly children who use that library. But I hope that there's enough room for many adults in that one as well. And this one, I'm just gonna have to think about. I'm really not settled on what I think. I hear you saying we need to move with the future. But it just to me looks very different and very out of scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Icke?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Certainly with Harlow Flats getting their second phase, the building, when you look at that rendering, it's really very modern looking. I think it's gonna do a lot for the center of town. Say to people that Bloomfield is a modern welcoming community. We still gonna have, you could still see the church people, the congregational church over there. It just seems to fit in. It really brings, brings like a new element to the center of town. Certainly, the architect will take everyone's comments in the, in the, in the, in the, in the play as we move forward with the public comment. But I think it's a beautiful looking building. I want to commend the architects for thus far taking everyone's concerns and for them continuing to take everyone's concerns. But this is beautiful, just looking at it. It's just magnificent. It's gonna be a centerpiece of town. Thank you.
I'm gonna circle back to Elizabeth, who we lost a few minutes ago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this building is dynamic and fun and inviting. The inviting part being the number one thing that staff and the board was looking for in this location. We want our public, everyone in our public, to be able to see themselves in this building. And having that clear story on the bottom, I think, will go a long way in bringing more people in. I also think, as Vangella said, our young people and the our young people and the future of Bloomfield will see this as a really inviting building and that is so important and so central to our mission. Ditto for the McMahon Wittenberry location. It's a building you want to go inside. You want to see what's going on in there. And being able to see it from Blue Hills, again, I think will draw more people in. And I'm so excited about the future of Bloomfield Public Library when I see these two renderings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see Vudanzi and we'll go to Vudanzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity again. And Lois, your assessment of what I said is absolutely correct. So I thank you for that. But this is my concern. My concern is that a lot of emphasis is placed on the aesthetics. A lot of things look good from the outside, but if there's no substance in the inside and as it relates to these libraries, it should be the resources and what you provide to the community that will draw them in, not what the building looks like. Because if time has already shown you that since 1965, when that building was actually opened and dedicated, 1965, people go to that library for their needs and the resources that it offers regardless of what it looks. So for the younger people, that they'll be drawn and time can only tell if that's true. If they haven't been drawn in based on the services that are offered there now, I doubt that they will be drawn in just based on the aesthetics. Now, they may initially, right? Because it's bedazzling. It's easy on the eye. Let me go and see what that's all about. But will it sustain itself with, with the children and the adults continuing to come back? Once the glamour and the newness has worn off, will people continue to go? Now, based on the feedback from these surveys, based on the participation of these calls out of a town that based on the most solid census analysis that we've been given, is 20,000 people. Okay? And I think that we all should be concerned. Yes, look at the future, but also look at the sustainability of this new modern building and the renovations of McMahon's building. Can we sustain it? Now, if no one else has noticed, and I've tried to keep us conscious of this as we've moved along in this process, basically primarily as a result of the coronavirus and the financial impact that it has had on Bloomfield families. Okay? Now, we are dealing with a 1.65% tax increase that Bloomfield families will have to endure in this next budget, in this new current budget that was passed. We can't foresee the future. The cost of lumber, the cost of all billing supplies are going up on a bi-weekly basis. I mean, would you pay for lumber a week ago, you won't pay the same price for lumber this week. And we're talking about building this building or breaking on it three years in the future. Look at what's happened to gas within the past 100 days. And if you pay attention to what happened this past weekend with the pipeline. Now, we haven't felt the immediate results of that yet because I guess we're north enough to not have to run to the gas stations at this point. At the end of the day, the bottom line is the cost. And will you attract more people to Bloomfield because of your new library? Or will you run people away from purchasing homes? I don't really care about the people that are renting because if they're paying taxes, they're paying taxes on their cars. I'm worried about the people that have long-term investments and mortgages in which they have to pay here in town. And will you force those people to leave their homes and allow them to go into foreclosure because they can no longer afford it based on our tax basis and based on the financial burden that the decisions that we make have on our overall community? I mean, really, I need everybody to really understand the magnitude of this and especially when you're trying to project the future.
Thank you.
What does the present look like? Thank you.
Mr. Berman?
Yeah, I have my hand up, but I want to, I want to go to Wittenberry McMahon when people are done with Prosser.
Okay. Any more comments or feedback with respect to Prosser? And we can go back and forth, but is anyone else who has not had an opportunity to voice an opinion or thought?
I do.
Who's that? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I have a quick, just a quick clarifying question as I joined late, so I don't want to put anyone or the committee backwards. But on the side view towards Bloomfield Avenue, is that, are those pillars? I couldn't, I can't really tell. Are those, is that a veranda with pillars?
This is Richard. Yes, those are columns. That is a veranda that we're creating where the entrance to the library would be. Yes, you're reading it correctly.
Okay. And in the front, next to the white car, is that where the the porch or the area would be where we would enter? The walkway for the entrance of the library?
There would be a paved plaza is what we called it.
Plaza, okay.
Paved area, maybe of a different color to call attention to this corner. The entrance to the library would be from the veranda into the building. There's also an entrance to the community room, also from the veranda a little further.
Okay. And that's brick on that side as well? Brick and metal?
Well, we haven't really made that decision, quite frankly. It's a different material with a different color. Some folks on the committee have read that. That's brick. But I think we can, as the design develops in the future, we can look at a number of different kinds of material. But I think the suggestion here in the rendering is that it's a different color. It's a different material.
Okay. Well, I just want to chime in and I agree with the multiple comments about the building being inviting. It's beautiful. But I also think it brings an air of newness and innovation and it's very attractive. And I think one of the things we want to have happen is to invite people, particularly to at McMahon. That has been an ongoing problem. But I truly believe that once we get residents into the building, that the programming and all that's offered will sustain them and they will continue to come. I think we can increase the participation rates for many of the programming that's currently offered. So I think it's definitely sustainable, but we definitely have to get individuals back into the building, participating in the programs, not just online, both, all, all three.
Thank you. Okay. I'll turn it over to you, Bob Berman. Go ahead if you want to go to McMahon.
Yeah, thank you. You're bringing up the picture from outside. Yeah, that. Okay. It's interesting. I see that you basically are keeping the exterior of the existing building and using that as, I'm gonna call it a block or separation between the old and the new. I find that an interesting concept. Again, I think this makes it a very inviting building. My only concern is because it is facing east about the sun for in the morning, especially in late, late spring and through early fall. It's gonna be pretty bright coming in there. So I would think you would, I would hope you would come up with something to you know, break up that light streaming in very brightly, too brightly. My other comment is more of a question as well is I don't know whether or not, and I hope you either know or you will find out whether or not the existing roof of the existing building could also support solar panels. Because if I remember correctly, facing south, there is nothing to block the sun. So the solar panels could be used on this building as well. I can't tell from this and I don't know, don't remember what the top of the old building actually looked like. But my one concern with this design is maybe it's too much openness because of the sun. Thank you.
Lois, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, it was up there.
I did.
I was going to ask about the solar panels as well, but Bob has covered that.
I'm sorry?
It looks as though Michelle Benoni has had her hand up.
Twice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Michelle. I apologize. I didn't see.
Well, that's okay. I would like to address one comment to our architects in that the statement was made that you have a commitment to being flexible about the building design. Does that flexibility only pertain to details or are you talking about wholesale design?
Michelle, this is Richard. I used the word flexible this evening and it was in the context of allowing the interior of the building to evolve as the program needs change. That's how I use the term flexible.
Okay, but what are, what is your opinion of that with regard to the exterior of the building?
Well, let me answer that. As I said, this is our first effort of what might look like. And certainly, we like to listen. Everyone has to say, anyone has comment, we're gonna listen and we're gonna study very carefully and answer to each question because you know, to answering yes or no is not a really a simple matter because we need careful study. I mean, we have done a serious way to start, but I emphasize that this is really pre-designed development phase. And when we start design development, we will study options and show whether we like comments or we studied it and we don't think it's not good. So that is very open. But I'm saying this, you know, our assignment at this point is providing some image for your referendum focus. And I think when come to changing the design and modifying certain area and so on will be done during the design phase that is after referendum. We are open. We are open.
Okay. That's quite a qualified answer, but I'm afraid that this brings me back to my original concerns of the degree to which the interior design of the building drives the exterior of the building, which in the case of this building, I think is significant. I'm disappointed that we don't have a lot of information that we need, or at least I felt I needed, on the interior use of the building and the construction of the interior of the building and how it related to what the eventual exterior of the building would look like. And from seeing your presentation this evening, I have validated many of my own concerns. We are talking about a lot of space inside this library building proposed that is open space up into a roof that has to be lit, that has to be heated, that increases the footprint of the building substantially in order to gain the usages that you're looking for below them. And then it gives us a building that has a building mass that to me, to my eye, is much too big for the existing lot. So when I ask you a question about flexibility, I am looking for a substantial scale down in the building size to try to look at those spaces that are simply providing span for your roof but have no real use other than being costly to maintain. If we can do that, I would think that would be a substantial improvement. The exterior reflects many of these important unknowns. Scale on the site is to me with regard to the presentation that you gave visually overwhelming. Second item that I would want to talk about are adjacency issues. And I understand and realize those things that you think you are reflecting as far as what I refer to admirably as Town Square already exists. And I understand your attitude toward diversity. But diversity, if it's well done in architecture, can be a beautiful thing. If it misses the mark, then it can just be a bad architectural choice. And my proposal would be to avoid any architectural choice that's not going to work in the final analysis from the standpoint of the visual point of view. Look what we have there. You've already denoted that. But also, the neighbor of the library in the case of the existing hardware store has an extremely commercial use to it should the owner of it proceed with a version of construction that's already approved. The building that you are proposing for the library and also for McMahon Wittenberry, in my view, have also decidedly commercial attributes to them. That's not to say that that's a bad thing. But when you consider what's around the buildings that are being proposed, it takes a little bit of consideration for that. And that is what, how people view architecture is about regardless of whether somebody considers that just thought or not. If you are doing a thoughtful review of material before you, everybody probably sees these things different. Think about what you see when you look at that picture. Especially the historic Roberts House, the Tom Green Town Hall, the Congregational Church, and then the new building that the neighbor is going to be building, whether it's medical or a dining facility. We don't know that yet. So I would think it would be very important to look at all those things, but mainly from the standpoint of this building mass on that site and some of the interior square footages that are being proposed, I think we're looking at a scale down. I think that we could justify a scale down very easily and still end up with the functions that the library and the library board is looking for. The spaces that the majority of the people who answered the survey are looking for. But the exterior, in my view, is a big disappointment, I'm sorry to say. That's the reason that I asked you the question about flexibility, because I think flexibility is needed here. I truly do. In order to make the visuals with regard to this building and the size of this building acceptable to the site that you're gonna put it on. So those are my general comments. The other thing that I would really like to have and I'm requesting formally is a copy of the presentation materials that you presented this evening. And if Dancy can provide those for us, I think it would go a long way toward being able to see these on something a little bit larger than a PC screen. I don't consider the matter final. I hope the committee doesn't either because I think that a lot of very substantial positive improvements can be made. And we could also finally have a handle on how many square feet we're talking about and an estimate of what each square foot is gonna cost. So those are my comments.
Thank you. And Michelle, I did not see your hand raised. I went back. But anyway, I apologize if you had your hand raised and I missed you. I did not see that. Mark?
Yeah, I do want to respond to some of the points that Michelle raised so that the public is clear. I believe we have very carefully and diligently arrived at a square footage. Our programming subcommittee and the Board of Trustees have worked really hard at scaling. at, at scaling this building down to what they believe is a reasonable minimum. Then they even took it further after we looked at getting cost estimates. I do see that our cost estimator hasn't fallen off his chair after seeing these renderings. So I think that's a good sign. But seriously, we have that solid information of square footage of cost estimates in hand after a lot of hard work. So I didn't, you know, I don't, I don't want to, you know, leave it out there that wow, we don't know what's going on there with square footage or we don't know what's going on with cost. Those are, I believe, well in hand at the moment.
Thank you. And, and I would add that, you know, we've had 25 meetings and the subcommittees have been meeting and we have already agreed with respect to square footage of programming space and all that work has been done. It can be refined. But I think that the committee on a whole has already agreed as to what we believe the proper spacing and programming will look like inside the building. So I, I think that it's inaccurate to say that we haven't talked about that or we don't know what it is because that subcommittee has been working on that for four months. And they do know what it should look like and they've made recommendations. It hasn't been final, but we have made a lot of progress with respect to that. And again, I don't want to get into specifics, but those who've been working in those subcommittees and those reports have been made to the full committee. And those minutes are always available. Bob Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a comment about, about costs. The, the estimates we have are reasonable. There's no question about that in my mind. Are they actually what it's going to cost? I don't know. And the reason I don't know is that we learned in the human services building and those people who served on the school building committees learned that what is actually going to cost you is a function of when you go out to bid. It's a very simple issue. If your timing is right on going out to bid, where there's not a lot of work out there for the contractors, you're going to get some very good bids. We learned that in the human services building, especially with tearing down the old junior hut. We also found out even though we were much later than we wanted to be going out for bids on the human services building that they came in a little bit lower than what we thought the, the estimates were. So that the cost estimates are reasonable in that respect. In terms of what the exterior looks like, I have to agree with the people who say we need to move forward. We need to be prepared for the 21st and incidentally closer to the 22nd century. I'm not going to be around for that. I doubt very much if many people sitting on this committee are going around for that. But our children, our grandchildren definitely will be. And when you look at what's going on in terms of heirloom flats, the design of that, we realize that there are over a thousand additional apartment units going up in town. There's something like 400 to 450 additional condos going on, going up in town. The houses in town that are priced under $350,000 literally sell within hours. There's something going on here that I don't know what, what's driving it. But I do think that moving forward is very important and I I know I have some concerns about the design of the McMahon-Wintonbury Library because of the sun. I think they're very striking designs. They set us apart. They sent a very clear message that we want, we're inviting. Libraries are both very inviting. And that we are looking forward to the future. We're not looking just to the past. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to give it to Vodunzi and I'll take two more comments and then we will go on into our public comment and hopefully be done at 7:30. So if Vodunzi just raised your hand and will, and hopefully folks are having comments with respect to the exterior study and we're getting into things outside of the study, but that's okay.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I promise to be brief. I, I think that it, I, I kind of, I do agree with some of the statements that Michelle Benoni made. And that's one I would like to see the detailed report. It was mentioned earlier on during a conversation with Tyson Kim and I'd, I'd like to see more details. But at the same time, it's hard to come to a complete decision with the direction in which we're going and be definitive that, you know, I, I want to move in the, in the manner that every, the majority of the people on the committee wants to move and that's forward, but I, I still have to ask these hard questions. And although minutes are provided from the subcommittee where those decisions are being made because essentially they have access to documentations that the overall committee doesn't have. And so I, I mentioned this last week or the week before last at our previous meeting. Provide all of the documents that those that are in these subcommittees get to make their assessment and their recommendation to the overall committee. As an overall committee member, I can't make a sound judgment just based on minutes. And I'm not always available to attend meetings. But if I have the information in which they're evaluating to come to their conclusion, I'm, I'm much more inclined to have a more agreeable perspective in terms of moving forward. But consciously along this journey, I, I have been very reluctant in moving in the direction of the overall committee because I just don't have access to either or documents that are being received when they're received so that I can come prepared to not have questions or have questions as well as information is going to be presented like, like this slide. You know, but I think it's access to information so that everybody can be informed. And I think that with, with that, all of us being on the, the same page because we're informed and having a discussion about it, it, and it gives the public more insight and it gives individual committee members more insight. So I just request that all the documents and the timeline, because the timeline that was presented in this meeting and which I have of, of record of, of receiving along this journey does not include the timeline in which Witt showed at our last meeting with, where there were much more detailed meeting information, whether that be from the, you know, between the chair and vice chair with other departments within the town that, that will work in conjunction with this project. You know, I think we should be privy to that and have discussions about what those discussions were about. That, that will keep everybody informed and it would be done in complete transparency. And I thank you for your time.
All right. I'm going to go to, who's this? I think it is Ava then Bob Ike. And I will say that the subcommittee work, for those of you who have not participated in the, the subcommittees, the subcommittees don't make decisions. They make recommendations that are brought to the full committee. And again, all of those meetings have been open to the entire committee, to the community. So folks have an interest. Someone made reference to the fact that she did not know about the programming space. If you haven't made meetings and you have not reached out to get the information, that information is available. We've discussed it. We vetted it. We've talked about it. We've had several meetings discussing programming and space. So it's not because it hasn't been discussed or presented. It may be because you didn't attend the meeting. And so maybe you want to reach out to myself or to Nancy to get the information that was discussed at those meetings that you missed.
Are there recordings for those, Mr. Chair, of those meetings? For like, I know these are recorded, but are those recorded to where I can view those meetings without actually being present?
I don't believe the subcommittee meetings are on YouTube. I don't know. I, I'd have to check Nancy, but I don't believe so. But I'm going to turn it over to Ava and then Bob Ike, then we'll go to the public comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for making the point about the fact that those of us who have done the work on the subcommittees have of course not made any decisions. I would like to point out that we are not privy to any secret or specialized documents. Three of us on that subcommittee are credentialed experienced librarians. So we have used our, what we've learned to gain those professional credentials. We have extensive experience. I, for example, have been working in libraries since 1968. And we have done extensive research ourselves using public documents available on the internet and research documents that are available on the internet. So we, we don't, we are not privy to something that no one can see. We have just done the research. And we have given you our best professional estimation of workflow, of functionality, of the necessity for flexibility and adaptability. And we have in fact looked at this space with an eye to reducing. If you look at the initial numbers and look at where we are now, we have with great pain reduced the size of the project more than 30%. It is not that we are willy nilly looking to build a hundred thousand square foot facility. We are looking at how it will work and what will best serve the people in Bloomfield. And that is our only, only motivation. Thank you.
Bob Ike?
Mr. Chairman, as, as a resident of the gateway, 90 Darby Street, the only, in the last few years, only improvement in that area has been Blue Hills Fire District replaced a aging and old firehouse. And they put up a new structure and that really enhanced the area. It's, it's across the street from the old Burnies. There's a church there now who came in and renovated that old Bernie site. Have a beautiful church there. This McMahon, as I rendering, as I see here today, will uplift the neighborhood. No doubt in my mind. When people see that building, it's going to uplift that neighborhood and hopefully bring some enhance the town and clean up some of those properties in that area. This is a goal. This is a must. But again, architectural team must take everyone's comments. We're only at the beginning. We still haven't gone to the public comment phase, but this, this will enhance the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Nancy, do we have any members of the public? You're muted.
Yes, we have. Gail Riley has her hand up. So Gail, I'm going to ask you to unmute and you can go ahead and speak. Unmute yourself and go ahead and speak.
Okay. Hi, Gail Riley, Maple Avenue, Bloomfield. This is my first time coming on to the, one of these meetings and I was late getting on to this one. I am a little disappointed in the rendering for the one in the center of town. You know, we are a, a New England town and I, I, I don't feel that the rendering that was shown fits into our town. It's too modern. And I don't know, I'm just very disappointed. I feel like everybody's trying to get away from being a New England town here. There's nothing wrong with being an old New England town. And the architecture that goes along with being an old New England town is beautiful. And I just feel like it's a beautiful building. Don't get me wrong. But I just don't feel that it fits into the center of Bloomfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Next we have Sten Casperson. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Sten.
Thank you, Nancy. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have several comments. They will be quick and there's more behind them. Number one, I believe that in both, that these renderings that we've seen plus the dress report we've heard about should be placed on both the town website for the library and their library's website itself, as well as put in the meetings, the meeting minutes so that the public has can see these. Number two, when I saw the Prosser rendering, I was startled. I was surprised. This needs to be thought over again, thought through, rather than saying, let's go back to colonial. But it is startling. I see now the plaza is at the street level with a slight slope up to the first floor entrance. I had thought discussion had said that plaza would be above the street a little bit and therefore above the noise, commotion, et cetera, of the considerable traffic that's surrounding this library. I will say that the rendering on Mountain Avenue does say there is no entrance to this library. You need to go around the corner. Find it on Tungus Avenue. It gets away from that. Where is the entrance? It's definitely not there. The porch does serve the purpose of, of raising the level of people use above the street and that's very beneficial. I might consider asking to reduce the colonades to one level instead of two levels. That'll also make that more of a porch. I will say all the glass in both of these renderings, McMahon and Prosser, that takes, to me, that takes away from the use of a lot of square footage. If I were there, I'm not sure I would want to sit, be working, be exposed that openly to the outside, whatever is going by pedestrians, dogs, fire engines, et cetera. Last comment. Based on the schedule that I see, this decision on what this building is going to look like potentially is on a fast track decision. The date that I saw for the council to get the information and say, okay, let's go, go ahead with this. I'm not sure that there's time remaining for a different rendering to the degree that's needed for a decision to be made. And that concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Todd Cooper. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Todd, and go ahead and speak.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Todd Cooper, to Belushi Ridge, Bloomfield. And I am also a Bloomfield board member of the Town Library Board Trustee member. But, but I certainly I come to tonight to the meeting to speak in the capacity of being a citizen and also in support of the, the upgrades and the new building proposed for Prosser. I think, I believe that those things that have been proposed, the spacing, if we could have more spacing, I think that, that that would be beneficial. And these times there are, libraries are, for the future are going to be much more than simply borrowing books or going for a quiet place to, to read. They will, there will be other opportunities for partnerships with, with outside organizations. There, there's going to be a need for space such as that. And certainly going back to the, the, the fact of having a new building, the, the materials that, that are now in play, I believe, will, will come in and be beneficial. I, I know they even talked just, just recently of, of having glass and, and things of that nature. However, I do believe that having a, a, a new building with new materials and those things and certainly in the center of town, which is where most traffic will come to if there's any business to be conducted and folks will be able to see a, a new building in, in, in the town center that reflects that, that Bloomfield, first of all, in that one space is modern. And you know, it's, it's classified as, as a rural town because of the, the size of the town and its town population, but a lot of business will be done there. So I believe that having that, the new building, having that with the new materials, being able to have the spacing and looking towards the future with partnerships and, and the ability to, to to morph into other useful other, to be able to morph and use, have other useful things for the spaces within the library. other, to be able to morph and have other useful things for the spaces within the library can only be accomplished with a new building. And lastly, I will say concerning costs, you know, I know that, not know, but I believe that there are many other ways for financing and would certainly trust that as this goes to the Town and Finance Committee, that those, there will be some things to to address, you know, how this is paid for. And, you know, though there may be a cost, it will, the benefit, I believe, that it will bring will far outweigh what the cost is. And so we know that there are other costs and some hidden costs and things of that nature. But certainly, if those are fleshed out, you know, prior to the, you know, being shovels in the ground, this can still, and I do believe, will be a successful build. And so lastly, I just want to again point out that, you know, I am in full support in certainly not only of Prosser, but to the McMahon building in both moving forward with their upgrades and new buildings. So thank you for your time. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. From the public?
Anybody from the public wanting to speak, raise their hand. If not, no, it looks like everyone from the public that wanted to speak has.
Okay, great. And I just wanted to follow up and assure everyone that the draft final report and the exterior study will be sent out to the committee this evening or tomorrow morning, and it will be up on the website for the public to review. And in closing, I just wanted to take a moment to thank our architects, TSKP, for doing a tremendous job, and we really appreciate all your efforts, your time. Our next meeting is Wednesday, May 24. And again, thank everyone for coming out tonight. Thank you for your earnest participation, your engagement, your thoughtfulness, and your comments. We will revisit this and look forward to seeing everyone on Wednesday. Hearing other businesses accept the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all again, and we'll see you Wednesday, the 24th. Good night.